Okay, um, I'd like to call the board's attention and the two microphones on the spot. I'd like to give you a line here. I'd like to call the board's attention a couple of pages to this document. The first one is on the screen is showing is page two. Uh, just read a couple excerpts. Um, the pipeline appears in the building on PCSF plan, compost holder, SOX, EPM, for being on site. See photos. On-site conditions match the as-built areas near the meter pad and on the pipeline are not permanently stabilized. Photo four shows an area near SDA two plus zero zero of the NOB that has not achieved permanent stabilization. Then accelerated erosion is occurring through and over the top of water bars at station two plus zero zero to two, uh, to station five plus zero zero with the possibility that animal traffic contributed. Photos eight to fourteen. Then the, the app, the, the NOB has a number of photographs attached. Uh, well, before we get to that, let's go down to Larry to the next slide. This is page five of eighteen. And you'll see for this Olympus has been cited for four violations on the two, uh, code sections from chapter seventy-eight A of twenty-five PA code and two code sections from chapter one of four, uh, confusingly, one of two of, uh, the chapter twenty-five, section which is chapter twenty-five. And you'll see that, uh, let's play this in a little more detail later, that there are the references to the citations in section seventy-eight A fifty-three and section seventy-eight A sixty-eight K. All they merely do is cross-reference, uh, twenty-five PA code, chapters one oh-two and one oh-five. So you see that there's a duplication of citations here for basically one event. Uh, now let's take a look at a couple of the pictures that were the video violation by Olympus specifically on page eight. Left one shows the compost sock. On the right photo number four, vegetation not permanently stabilized near SDA two plus zero zero. That is what DEP cites. Those are the kind of things that DEP cites Olympus. Uh, Larry can now go down to, uh, page eleven. Left photo number nine, erosion and deer trail continues between second and third water bars. And then photo ten, uh, close up to show deer prints. These are the kind of things that DEP cites Olympus. Mr. Walker, can you state and spell your name for the record?
Ross G. Walker, third. R-O-S-S-G-W-A-L-K-E-R, Roman numeral three.
And where do you reside, Mr. Walker?
Upper Borough Township, West Morland County.
Have you served as an elected official in Upper Borough Township?
Yes, I have.
And in what capacity? And for how long?
I'm a chairman of the Board of Supervisors since nineteen ninety-eight, uh, continuously. I was elected to the board in nineteen ninety-seven. I just won my fifth six-year term as a supervisor in Upper Borough Township.
And could you just give a little bit of your personal, uh, professional background?
Yes, I'm a funeral director, own the Ross Walker Funeral Home in New Kensington. And I've been there since nineteen seventy-eight. And I'm president and owner now. Worked for forty-three years there and been licensed as a funeral director.
In your capacity, uh, as a member of the Board of Supervisors of Upper Borough Township, and you heard and voted on to approve the conditional use for what's known as the Zeus Well Pad?
Yes, sir.
And the same thing for what's known as the Nick's Valve Yard?
Yes, sir.
And the Calliope Well Pad?
That's correct.
And the Sleen Well Pad?
That's right.
Now, in interest of full disclosure, you have a lease with Olympus, is that correct?
Uh, I have a, uh, on a contiguous property that I own in the township. I signed up and got the, uh, bonus payment, but I get no royalty.
So, uh, from?
Any gas company.
Your, your lease properties, are they in any of the units or the Zeus, Calliope, or Sleen wells?
None.
Okay. So you, it didn't obtain any financial benefit, uh, from Olympus' development on any of those facilities?
No, I did not.
And now in the future, should there be an occasion where Olympus, uh, files an application for a well pad for which you might perceive royalties, would you recuse yourself?
I, I would recuse myself, yes.
Um, now you're here voluntarily tonight.
Yes, I am.
And Olympus paying or compensating anything for that?
No, we're being, no.
Okay. Uh, let's focus on the Zeus Well Pad. That's the one well pad that's had the most developments so far.
Yes.
You're aware that commencement and construction of that pad started in twenty-eighteen, there were three wells initially drilled over that year and the next, and there are three now under, uh, a process of being drilled now, is that right?
That's correct.
And where do you reside in proximity to the Zeus Well Pad?
Uh, probably three inches to one-half mile south of the Zeus Well Pad.
So when Zeus was initially developed, wells were drilled with frac a couple of years ago, and then now the same activities occurring now, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. From your home, did you hear any, uh, activity from Olympus at the Zeus Well Pad?
No.
Did you observe any adverse environmental impacts such as noise, vibrations, air emissions, uh, water pollution, traffic during the construction of the well pad, the drilling, the fracking of the wells, what wells going into permanent production?
No.
Now, there's also a well pad that was recently approved this year for Calliope, is that correct?
That's correct.
And are you familiar with that site?
Yes.
And development on that site is the start, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the pad's been constructed. And have you occasioned to drive by that pad?
I, I drove by it again today.
Yes. And based on your observations, did, what did you observe, any adverse environmental impacts such as noise, vibrations, air emissions, water pollution, or traffic during the construction of the pad in Calliope? Now, now, as I have called the Nick's Well Pad, or the Nick's Valve Yard, are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a, um, that Valve Yard was recently, uh, construction of that was recently completed, is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, it isn't in operation quite yet.
No, they were working on it today. I saw it today.
So if you have occasion to drive by the, the Nick's Valve Yard?
Yes.
Okay. And in, in doing so, have you observed any adverse environmental impacts such as noise, vibration, air emission, water pollution, or traffic during the construction of Nick's Well Pad?
No.
Now, um, Sleen is not started yet, is that correct?
That's correct. But you did make an observation on that. I saw the path that the trucks were taking when they started.
Let, let's talk about roads a little bit. From your perspective, what impact has Olympus' operations had on township roads?
The township roads close to the pads have been greatly improved. Bethesda Road right by Zeus was, uh, paved, paved and the bridge was repaired. I think it cost them about a million dollars on that, uh, particular road. And it's a beautiful road now, the one that goes to the Zeus pad. The bridge has been repaired and it's a very nice road. A million dollars is about the same as our budget in Upper Borough for one year. And they, uh, they put that much money into the road. It's a long road.
They also, I think, was it Olympus also making improvements to white cloud and higher roads?
Yes.
How do the conditions of these roads now compare with what existed prior to Olympus' developing Zeus pad?
Well, the, uh, the people ride way too fast on the road now because it's a very nice road.
Uh, I mean, how does it compare with the?
Oh, the roads were very bad. We have forty-four miles of road in the township, or sixteen square miles. Twenty-two of the roads are, uh, twenty-two miles of the roads are township roads and twenty-two are state-maintained roads. So they're much improved.
Do you aware that Olympus is undertaking additional water improvements in the township?
Very nice.
In conjunction with the new, uh, with Zeus?
Yes.
Um, so one question.
To the tune of another three hundred thousand.
With respect to Zeus, in your capacity as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, have you personally received any complaints from anybody about operations?
No, I haven't.
And what about Calliope? And what about the Nick's Valve Yard? Just to conclude, do you have any overall observations on Olympus' operations in the township?
Well, I consider Olympus to be a good neighbor. They've been respectful of the township residents. They have been competent and, uh, very responsive to any of our needs. I, I really truly consider them a good neighbor.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you. I'll just maybe have a little.
Anyone have a question?
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Walker. All right. One, one minute. Uh, so now is the opportunity for those folks who are registered as party objectors. Um, and everyone, at this point, I think after E-plus hearing knows who they are. Uh, you do have an opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Walker on his testimony that was just provided here. Are there any party objectors who have any questions for Mr. Walker? If you, if you do, just come on up. You know that we have, we're, we're very informal here. Again, uh, you just want to state your name, spell your last name, and then go ahead and ask your question. Dr. Kalena, we'll start with you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ryan Kalena, thirty-nine ninety-eight Crestwood Drive, Pennsylvania, PA, one-five-zero-four-four. I'm sorry, sir, what was your name again? Pardon? What was your last name again? Walker. All right, Mr. Walker, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
So in, in regards to Nick's Valve Yard, uh, collectively from the start of the construction to the current day, how many hours or minutes would you say you've actually stood and observed the construction, uh, construction, operation, or any activities that have taken place on that Valve Yard to date?
I haven't stopped, uh, other than to take a couple of photos. I, uh, I drive by it often and I, uh, I feel like if I were to stop, maybe, uh, would make someone uncomfortable. So I don't actually stop unless I stop to very briefly take a picture for the car.
Okay, so can you quantify maybe hours, minutes?
Oh, probably, uh, fifteen times I've driven by and, uh, maybe fifteen minutes.
Okay. And, and that's over a course of how many, what period of time from the beginning of the Nick's construction until the present day? How many days are you doing? How long that's taken?
How long has that been approximately?
Mr. Walker, you, you, you have to actually just answer to the best of your ability.
Right.
If you don't know, you don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So, so. But I know I was there at the beginning of it. It's fairly close in the beginning.
Very, very well. Uh, that's fine. So, um, so would you say and agree that your statements may, are based on considerably limited in scope compared to the overall timeframe, construction, and activities around that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can you inform the group here, uh, how close the Nick's Valve Yard is to the nearest
Several hundred feet.
Several hundred in terms of, can you quantify the number?
Uh, not as crow flies, but as on the road.
Okay. Would you be able to ascertain kind of what a, what a crow fly direct line would be from the, from the Nick's pad to the nearest home in?
Probably not. It's a couple of hundred feet, I would say.
Okay.
So you're on the road or is it crow flies?
So you're saying under three, two, one?
Two hundred, probably.
All right. And then how many homes are constructed around that Nick's well, that Nick's Valve, uh, valve, uh, in a, in a circular manner? Would you say, you know, less than fifty, over a thousand?
You mean as far as, uh, two or three hundred feet radius?
No, I'm saying in a one-point-two-five mile radius. If we were to look down on a Google map and, and the location of the Nick's Valve Yard?
Probably, uh, a good many in a one-point-two-five mile.
Are you able to quantify that numerically?
We have a, a community up there, a, uh, building, a development up there that there's quite a few people in, and it's within a mile.
Okay. As you say, that development has more or less than five hundred individuals living in it.
Less than.
Less than five hundred?
Yes. Our total population in Upper Borough Township's about twenty-three hundred people.
Okay.
I know that the Nick's line is on one of the most rural areas in the township.
Okay. And what is? That Nick's line obviously connects to some type of transmission line, correct?
Yes.
Do you know the company that operates that transmission line?
Frontier.
Okay. Do, do you know the quant, the, the classification of that Nick's, of that transmission line that the Nick's Valve Yard, uh, attaches to? Is it in a high consequence area?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay. Um, are you familiar with the, the area in which they're proposing to, to place the Dionysus Well Pad? Or, you know, or you know where the, the well pad's going to be proposed to be?
Approximately, yes.
Approximately. Would you say in comparison to where the? I, I forget. Is it Zeus that the Nick's pad is next to? Okay. So, so Zeus and the Nick's Valve Pad, can you quantify in that one-point-two-five mile radius, how does, is, is that, is that, is that population fairly rural in that area?
The whole township's very, very rural, yes.
And you said it was about less than five hundred probably in that housing plant around that area?
Yes, yes, less than five.
So you would classify that area as pretty rural?
Yes.
Okay. And, and based on your, your knowledge, and sorry, I don't know how deep that goes around where they put the Dionysus pad, are you aware that there are over four thousand residents in that one-point-five-two-five mile area where they're putting the Dionysus Well Pad?
I'm not.
Okay. Would you classify the house in residence?
Yes, sir. Do you find that surprising?
Just a quick question. Whether he finds it surprising or not really isn't relevant.
Just have a conversation?
Uh, no, we're actually, uh, we're asking questions and begin testifying.
Okay. Well, um, so, so would you say that based on your naughtling knowledge of the Dionysus Well Pad and the surrounding residential area to your knowledge compared to the Zeus and the, the Nick's Valve that, that, would you say there are one-to-one comparison?
I would, I, I don't know what means, but what, what?
In terms of density of population?
Hold on, one at a time. So the objection is, uh, he's asking you to clarify your question. I, I think you can rephrase that probably and still get the answer you're looking for.
Okay. Let me rephrase that. Um, based on your knowledge of, you said it's the Zeus, right? I'm sorry. Zeus and Nick's Well Pad, one, one-point-two-five mile radius, that population density, you stated is probably less than five hundred. In comparison to where they're putting Dionysus Well Pad, would you say, actually, let me ask you this first. Have you driven past where they potentially are going to be putting the Dionysus Well Pad? Have you driven past nine-ten? Nine-ten? Yeah. So if you, have you driven past the vicinity of where they're proposing to put the Dionysus Well Pad? I don't think. Okay. Would you say with your knowledge of where Zeus and the Nick's Valve sites at, in terms of residential density, which you stated tonight, would you say that is equal in comparison potentially to the density of population around the Dionysus Well Pad?
I would object that it's like a witness's answer that he had not provided the, the most.
And, I mean, to, if, if he. Are you asking whether more than four thousand people that you represented is more dense than less than five hundred people?
Thank you, yes.
No, you don't even, you don't even thank me. But that's, we, we don't need to take that extra step. The board understands your, your position.
Yeah, I mean, so, uh, do I need to restate that?
I think, I think you made your point. I think you move on to the next question.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you for being here tonight. Have a very long time.
Thank you, Dr. Kalena. Uh, is there anyone else, any other party objec? Any other party objectors with questions for Mr. Walker?
Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Evening.
Victoria Austin, Nineteen Hemlock Street, Barreford, PA. Um, Mr. Walker, do you have any training in air pollution?
No.
Do you, can you see the gases that are around us in the air?
Which, which gases are?
Can you see gases in the air around us?
No.
Do you have any training in water pollution?
No.
How would you say that you, you stated that, uh, there was no air or water pollution emitted from these wells? What are you basing that on?
I would object his testimony that he had not observed those type of emissions.
Yeah, I, I think that's, Mr. Luke is properly, properly characterizing his testimony. Read the rephrase your question or may you move on to the next question?
Uh, because, do you know that some emissions may be invisible to the naked eye?
Of course.
That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Uh, any other individuals with questions for Mr. Walker? Come on up, sir.
Can you take your mask off a little bit?
Yes, I can do. Thirty-seven Corporate Wood, Elaine Catherine. Hi, Mr. Walker. Thank you, thank you. Uh, just along with my previous question just asked earlier, um, you were asked if you observed any air, any pollution or environmental impacts?
Yes.
As well as, I believe that was the question. If you answered, no.
That's correct.
But according to the prior person, just to clarify, you don't have any experience in environmental science or engineering or anything like that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, the other question I had is regarding the roads. Uh, did you observe that there was a lot of, uh, water truck traffic while the fracking operations were carried?
They did not go past my house, but I know there was lots of traffic.
Okay. Um, do you know about how long that went on for?
I think two months.
Okay. Have they been back to drill any additional wells on those sites yet?
Yes.
Okay. Did the traffic reoccur at that plant?
Somewhat, yes. And it doesn't go by my house.
So it doesn't affect you directly?
It doesn't affect the people on Dyer Road. That's correct.
And, uh, you, uh, you might not be aware, but one of the roads is affected by us, the windy country road, which is, uh, you know, it's nice because of the weather and things. You mentioned though that, uh, when you asked, uh, under a recommendation, uh, that the roads were improved greatly in your area.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Did you say though that you, you know, having trouble, I believe I heard this, but if I'm wrong, correct me, that you're having trouble with people speeding when the road starts now?
Oh, speeding because the road's so nice.
Right.
Yes.
And that's one part.
But we really, I, I'm sort of being facetious when I say that because it is a very lovely road now and before it wasn't. And you can go faster on a nice road.
Oh, yes, you can. That's one thing to avoid.
But we never think that that's a bad thing.
Okay. So, uh, thank you very much. That's my, my pleasure. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Are there any other, uh, individuals with questions for Mr. Walker? And again, just a reminder, um, feel free to turn to your neighbor if you do not know how to silence your phone. They probably can help you.
Tom Tisa, six-twenty-eight Whispering Falls, six-twenty in Pennsylvania. I'm Mr. Walker.
Hello, how are you?
So you were on the, um, board of, you were the president of the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, sir.
Do you remember at the time that they did public hearings for the wells that were being developed from there on?
I do remember, yes. Some of which went on till after midnight.
Do you remember, did, uh, Olympus bring in a, uh, an expert to talk about road surveys and the, to status of your road at the time before they did?
I believe they did, yes. I think it might have been Huntley and Huntley then.
Oh, okay. Do you remember what that engineer said the condition of your roads were before Olympus was going to come on site?
Oh, somewhat poor.
Somewhat poor? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. Any other individuals with questions for Mr. Walker?
Mary Kate Calabota? Hi, I'm Dr. Walker.
Thank you.
Good?
Very good, thank you.
Okay. So back to your roads.
Yes.
You said they were improved. How were they improved?
The township roads, we, we're a sixteen square mile township with forty-four miles of road, uh, twenty-two of which are maintained by the state, twenty-two miles of road are maintained by the township. So we have a limited budget. We have about a one-point-one million dollar budget every year and probably about a third of that goes to roads, a third of it goes to our police department, and maybe a third for the administration of the office and the secretary. So the roads aren't in the best condition in Upper Borough Township and it's, they're our biggest complaint. So we're awfully happy to have a nice road here and there.
So who paid for the roads to be improved?
Olympus did.
And how much did they pay?
They, they're upwards of about one-point-three million right now.
One-point-three million? Interesting.
And that included a bridge also.
So, so they paid for a road and a bridge and they paid one-point-three million to the township?
Oh, no. No, no, that's what they have in it. That's how much that they spent to improve our road.
Okay.
Which of course benefited them and. Which of course benefited them, and then of course it benefits us.
Okay, did they put any lights or anything?
Oh, no, we have no streetlights in Upper Borough Township.
Any signs or anything they put up?
No, we have road signs, but we're in charge of those.
Okay, so you said that you had not personally received any complaints about Olympus?
That's correct.
Is it possible that there have been other complaints submitted to other supervisors or to anyone else in the township?
Uh, yes, it is possible, and I talked with the supervisor, but I'm unaware of anything that has come up. And I know that the secretary that's in the office every day, maybe she would get something, she would take care of it. I say that Olympus has been responsive to us, because if there is anything that comes up, they take care of it immediately. I remember on that beautiful road on Bethesda, one time a pothole came up, and before we could even call, they had it repaired. So they're very approachable, and they're very responsive to anything that's needed to be done.
Are you aware of any DEP violations that were brought up with regarding any of the wells or any of the work that Olympus did?
No, I'm not aware personally, I'm not saying, there may be one, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Some of those violations, DEP is very, you know, they, they really want to get in there and make a violation, some of the violations...
I'm not direct to that, that's not, that's a conclusion.
Right. But I think there was a couple of rabbit holes or something, because you had some deer, they had some deer trails, but I'm unaware of them.
Okay, so you said you sold your drilling rights to Olympus?
I, I have a contiguous property next to my farm, and I bought another 25 acres 20 years, 30 years ago, and I owned the mineral rights on that, and I did sell the rights, yes, to Huntley and Huntley.
To Huntley and Huntley, were you compensated?
Yes, I was.
Okay, Huntley and Huntley is part of such a comfortable...
Yes, that's right.
Okay, no further questions, thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, any other party objectors before we let Mr. Walker go, yes? Dr. Glenn O'Leary?
I have a point of clarity after, after this.
I just have one question. Steve Sobehart, S-O-B-E-H-A-R-T, 306 Ridgefield Court, Madison Park, 101. And I just have one question, and that is, you, Mr. Walker said that it was township roads that were repaired or taking care of by Olympus. The roads that are affected here by this Dionysus website, the well pad, are county and state roads. I would like to ask, is Olympus going to take care of county and state roads?
Well, I'm not Olympus, but I know that one of our roads is Oak Lake Road, and it's a state road, and they will be taking care of that, if a yes. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Sobehart. Dr. Glenn, you did use your only opportunity, but go ahead and raise your, raise your point of clarification as you call it.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry to address the word, I don't have a question for the witness, I would like to ask again for the subpoena for the well site to be reintroduced and reconsidered as a part of this application based on this witness's testimony to the fact that the well site was in fact necessary for that well pad in which he testified tonight. So again, I would reintroduce for the third time that I would like my subpoena to be reconsidered and attached as a part of this application, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glenn O'Leary, the board denies your application for the subpoena.
I'd like to say too that...
You got to wait until you ask your question, I apologize, but I thank you for your time. Are there any other questions before we let Mr. Walker go? Yes, come on up.
Ronson, 7311.
I own about 100 acres, yes. I do have a water well, yes, and I have a spring also, and I also have city water. I drink the city water. I found this squirrel in my spring house.
So this was your well, did you have it tested prior to drilling?
No, I didn't.
Did you have it tested during drilling?
No.
Did you have it tested after drilling?
No.
And you said there were multiple rounds, and they didn't score multiple wells?
Yes.
So on any of those rounds of drilling, at any point did you have water tested?
No, never had it tested until the squirrel.
I was going to ask for test results, but I guess you don't have them. How would you, how would you have determined that there wasn't any kind of impact to the water?
Well, I wasn't worried about the water at, at the farm and for our neighbors.
So is that because you had water?
Yes.
So...
We also had the, some of the neighbors had the water tested though, and to, to know it, I mean, there was nothing with, in the water.
And they formally brought, by this testing, the township to be...
Yes.
And they was...
Section, here's a...
I believe that, I believe that water tests were performed by Huntley and Huntley, Olympus.
Do you know what, how far the radius that they...
No, I do not know, I think that there were just a very few people that were interested in getting the water checked. We're about 90 to 95% water in the township now. Public water, yes.
This has, I can say for research, there are various numbers, 300, 400, always tests.
Yes.
Several states have, it certainly, it's kind of... So you, you voted for, like, their plans to approve it?
Yes, I did. There were three supervisors in Upper Borough Township, and the vote was two to one.
When you voted to approve Olympus plans, did those initial plans include the location and the related equipment in connection to larger gas pipeline?
Yes.
They included them from start to finish?
I believe so, yes, yes.
Would you have been more or less likely to approve, like, had they not provided the entire, how they go, going to the well pad to connect to the main gas line?
Well, we asked him that question, and again, the experience that we've had with Olympus has been that they're very positive, and they have these things worked out to connect there, we're all transmission lines and whatnot, we're all, they know exactly where the gas was going to go.
So there were surprises from the township perspective?
No, we, we had a smooth sailing after it was approved.
Good for the questions, thank you.
Thank you. Are you guys clapping for me here?
Full clap. Full clap.
Hi, Mr. Walker.
Hi. Thank you, pleasure.
Are you familiar with the site where the Zeus pad was built and built sites?
Yes.
And the underlying ground below them, are there any mines, old mines located underneath those wells?
I can't tell you that exactly, I haven't seen the subsidence mapping, or, but I know that there's lots of mines in, in the area, in all of West Virginia, Pennsylvania.
So before any of your public hearing, no information came out like that?
Anything like that came out, I don't believe so.
You don't think, you don't, I've got no idea.
No, I don't, I don't remember anything about subsidence or mines that were underneath, but I'm sure that it was checked into.
And that, I, I think it was checked, but if you weren't aware, but New York's, that was there?
Well, yeah, but the geographers that are going to be drilling, the experts and the engineers would know that before they drill, I'm sure if they were going to drill into a mine, they would...
So you, you as a supervisor did inquire into whether or not mine?
I don't believe we did, I don't think we did inquire into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. All right, last call, any questions for Mr. Walker?
I would just like you to...
Mr. Walker, no, you cannot, those speeches tonight unfortunately, Mr. Walker, Mr. Lucas may have one or two redirect.
Just one question on redirect, when you were talking about people speeding on township roads, were you referring to, like, the... Just one question for you, Mr. Walker. When you were talking about speeding on township roads, were you referring to vehicle servicing Olympus's facilities or the general population?
Oh, no, the general population.
Thank you, that's all.
Yes, and that helped us with tickets too.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, it's been a pleasure. We are, Mr. Lucas, any other witnesses or testimony and rebuttal?
No.
Okay. All right, aside from then your summation at the end, Mr. Lucas, is Olympus resting its case?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, folks, we will now move on to the public comment, we are going to go row by row, now keep in mind, just because it's your next in the row does not mean you're required to speak, you won't have to say a word, just kind of shake your head and we'll move on to the next person. I would ask again that you stand up, come up to the microphone, state your name, spell your last name, I will keep a clock, a timer running for three minutes, you're not required to speak for the whole three minutes, just provide whatever comment it is that you have, whether it's either for or against the application. I'd ask, no clapping, no commentary from the public, everyone, whether you've been here for the entire eight and a half hearings, or this is your first one, we've been treating everyone with respect, and everyone's done a really good job with that, so appreciating that everybody, people on different sides of this issue, let's continue to be respectful, and we will jump right in then. Ma'am, since you were the one who's, Ms. Calavota? Hold on one moment, please.
Mr. Robb?
Are the individuals who are speaking required to be Westier Township residents?
Thank, thank you for pointing that, it's residents and taxpayers of Westier Township only.
And Mr. Robb, I've heard from your prior statements, public comments limited, if any objectors had their chance, and that they don't give a comment now, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we've been clear about that, you know, from the very beginning, party, this does not include party objectors, so if you are a party objector, also give sort of the wave or nod or whatever, move on to the next person. So ma'am, in the front row here, why don't we, so you're not Ms. B?
I'm Ms. B.
Okay, come on up, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Oftz, N-O-F-T-Z, under 160 Dawson Road, Westier. I think, with the township, I'm, I'm more of a business oriented person, if we, anywhere in a township, you can bring extra money in to help sustain the township, it would be better for everybody. And I'm sure our local townships like Buffalo and Fraser, they all have wells on it, and they seem to have very little problem, because they have a lot of highs around their wells that do, and it's, it's impossible to not have an exciting with D E R, D E P, whatever it is, and I'm sure their supervisors have the same propaganda that you have, but our seem like be more rehearsal, rehearsing than anybody. Those guys are good, but not that much, they can write, thank you.
Thank you, sir, all right, moving on to our next.
Good evening, my name is John Oftz, under 150 Dawson Road, Westier Township. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the Dionysus well pad, before the extension. This is a great opportunity for the township to utilize the resources that we have, and provide additional financial resources to leaseholders and many partners of leaseholders in the township, as well as the township itself. Also to help out the levels, many levels, we've been in challenging times such as the coronavirus pandemic we're in right now. And furthermore, the speeding issue, the announcement is to stay by our road, they speed all the times about this one, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Young lady with the black hat, you can speak? All right, sir?
Jeff Johnson, 107 San Antonio, 428 Clendenham Road. Clendenham? 100% for it, I believe that, as they mentioned very clearly to the township, I believe that Olympus is under such scrutiny that if they mess up, you know, they're going to do everything in their power not to mess up, it's a problem. So I think it's a good thing for us, and it's a good thing for the country, using their own energy, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, is our corporate board going to take our opportunity? No, go ahead, skip over that. Sir?
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Walter Sloan, I live at 137 Donaldson Road, give so many others here, I believe. I'm speaking on behalf of my entire family. We encourage the Board of Supervisors to approve the Olympus Dionysus well pad project's conditional use applications. Our 100-year-old family company has served the U.S. natural gas transportation industry since it began by supply and lubrication system services for natural gas pipeline compressors. We firmly support the industry and will continue that, the industry that has and will continue to support our family. There are upwards of 25,000 gas compressors in 3 million miles of natural gas pipelines in the United States. In 2020, there were 483,000 gas wells producing, 69,000 of which are in Pennsylvania, this infrastructure is absolutely vital to our economy as well as national security. Having personally visited thousands of gas facilities over my 45 years in business, I'm retired now, by the way, happily so, I know that gas is produced and transported safely. That said, it is our belief that the closer gas is produced to market, that is, homes and businesses in Westier Township, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This price, I don't think you're probably going to speak, we heard from Mr. Walker, so let's get down to the second row, back this way, we'll go snake, snake style, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, my name is Steve, I'm Tunic, V-I-T-U-N-I-C, I live at 4268 Clendenham Road, excuse me, our family's been there since 1966, and I'm here to speak in favor of the project. I would just like to, first of all, I think it's great that everybody cares this much to be on Westier tonight, it's great to see a community that is engaged, but I want to speak just momentarily on behalf of people who hold land that would be part of this. At many neighbors who do not own as much land as we do, but by no means wealthy, but you can't imagine how much help this is enabling us to hold on to these properties where we let people hunt, we let people walk, we let people just enjoy the woodlands, and we have no other means other to hold on to these properties that contribute to making Westier a great place to live, other than this in many ways. So I would ask people to consider before their... So I would ask people to consider before their resistance to this, the alternative. If this, these things aren't here, if this project, for example, doesn't go through, we will have to look at things such as lumbering our place flat. And I don't think anybody wants that, people objecting to a well pad a mile away, that I might have to cut down the trees in your backyard where you presently like to look out. And in addition, there's constant pressure to development. You think, why, why should we struggle to hold on to this? And pay the taxes and dig in here for 50 years when people won't even allow us the means to hold on to it? We can turn around and sell it for development. We don't want to. We want to remain an engaged part, a great part of the community that people can just enjoy the natural environment. But this is really one of the few tools at our disposal to do so. So I hope people will be understanding of that and I hope that you all vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next?
Joe Vitunic, P S and Victor, I T U N I C, 4268 Clendenham, Ibsonia, 15044. I want to echo the support that my brother expressed for the Dionysus well pad. I would note that if Olympus is saddled with a useless piece of property and sells it, sells the site of the pad for development, you're likely to end up with a couple hundred homes there, twice that many cars, and instead of having a, I think it's 10 to 15 acre well pad, you're going to have 100 acres of homes. The Western Township Board has done a good job over the decades of holding off some of this explosive development, but it can be a losing battle. We landowners are under continuous pressure to sell or to manage taxes. I've handled the family negotiations with the county assessors. It's not pleasant. What I do want to note, in terms of five years down the road maybe, the Dionysus pad does stretch from Route 910, but all the way past the Red Belt and two parts of Route 8, and all of it is ripe for development and all of us there are under pressure. The effect of development, whether it be the well pad property or the broader region, on water quality, on air quality, on traffic, and on township infrastructure, if you have more people, you need more schools, and everything else, will be horrible, will end up by living in a small, virgin, cranberry. There is a financial effect that I cannot quantify because much of it is speculation, but there is an impact tax paid to municipalities involved in fracking. Payments in 2020 were about 1 point, a little less than 1.1 million dollars to Allegheny County. There's a complex rule of policy that I read up. 60% goes to municipalities, 40% goes to ecological support of the state. I don't know how much. A Westier slice of that pie would be, that it would be something. I also think that the public interest is a good thing. After all, I grew up here. Since I was 15, I've walked in that area literally hundreds of times. I could give you all the tour of the watershed, tell you what the types of trees are, and the last, worry about the deer crates.
I'm sorry, your, your three minutes are up, sir, thank you.
That's it, I think. I would hope that it would be for our.
All right, any party objectors in the, the rest in any row, non, sorry, non-party objectors in the rest in any row?
I'm David Calavota, K-A-L-I, C-A-L-A. My address is 702 Crystal Spring Court, Ibsonia, PA. I had the opportunity to listen to most of the testimony in these hearings. There are many areas in which Olympus is not in compliance with Westier ordinance. Olympus is treating a deep well site as though it were just a simple pad. It is more than this. The Westier Conditional Use Ordinance states if multiple areas are used, then the total combined areas shall be considered the deep well site area. I totally agree with having a separate, I totally disagree with having a separate hearing to approve transmission lines, heating station, and an interconnect. This is all part of a deep well site and should have been included in this hearing. Much time in the hearing was devoted to the definition of the building. The code is clear on this. A building is a structure that is enclosed and portions of which are protected from the weather, are usually climate controlled, heated and/or air conditioned, and that it's usable for habitation or as a working environment. My wife and I have driven by the consolidated building in question several times. We have seen for ourselves that it is, it is a solid, climate-controlled building. We have seen for ourselves that it's truly a building in which people work. We have a photo that we took on November 8th of a consolidated work truck in front of the building. I'm going to submit this when I'm done here. Additionally, the 650-foot setback is clearly defined in the Westier ordinance. A deep well site, which would be placed more than 650 feet from any pre-existing building located off the property where the deep well site is, may be permitted. But by its own admission, Olympus drawing shows several buildings in violation of the 650-foot setback from both well pad and the deep well site. Olympus has further failed to comply in its application with many submissions required by our ordinance. Thus Olympus has not met its burden of proof for conditional use. It seems to me that the public has been forced to defend Westier Township ordinance and to point out the errors in Olympus's application. Olympus's application should have been thrown out and it did not comply with our code on its face. The area in which the deep well site would be placed is a highly populated area. I'm also submitting with my public comment, United States Department of Transportation map showing the area of the well site as a highly populated area. The proposed Olympus Dionysus deep well site does not comply with the Westier Township ordinances.
You're up, I'm sorry, your time is up.
I respectfully request the Westier supervisor to deny the application.
Thank you. Mr. Payne? Objection?
Is that guy objecting?
No. All right, next commenter, come on up, sir. Folks, if you can stay quiet in the, in the gallery for now while we're listening to public comment, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Good evening, Brandon Ulynci, U-L-I-N-C-Y. I'm at G147 Fire Drive.
You give us a sign.
Uh, any higher drive? My name is Brandon Ulynci, U-L-I-N-C-Y. I live at G147 Fire Drive. I'm just going to be personal, PA, but I'm here representing a regular authority. So, we have 1600.
Hold on, just, just one second, just, just so I'm clear for the record. So you are representative of a, of a mineral property in Westier Township?
That's correct.
Okay, and what, what, what capacity? Are you an officer of the company or what's that?
Climate Management Manager.
Okay.
And then, so with 1600 net mineral acres in Westier. Sorry, I'm sorry.
You can raise that microphone, you're a little bit taller.
With 1600 net mineral acres in Westier, many within the footprint of the Dionysus well pad, we would like to extend our support for this project. Our position is detailed in a letter that I'll be submitting from our VP legal and land. And without taking too much of your time, the very first, we would like to reiterate two main points from this letter. Number one, we urge the board not to take a restrictive reading of the ordinances that would prohibit oil and gas development within Westier. And number two, adopting a restrictive reading that would prohibit oil and gas development would force the very first role of the team to evaluate a statements plan under the amendment to the Constitution of the United States. In conclusion, very first, we respectfully urge the board to approve the Dionysus well pad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we are now working our way back this direction. Steelers hat, are you, no. Old gas guy, other guy, down there. All right, row behind them? I know this isn't going to look good on the transcript, but I swear it's for, all right. Next, white, natural gas guy? Next to you, ma'am? No? Okay, ma'am? All right, come on up.
Bernadette Sutter Zine, 275 High Tire Ford Drive, Ibsonia. Sky your last name? Sutter, S-U-T-T-E-R, Z, as in deeper, A, J, two words, thank you. I would never have dreamed I'd be standing here, but I feel so, so strongly about this that I, I can't pass up the opportunity. I just don't know, I mean, my age, my family is grown, and, but I feel that folks that have young families, how could they possibly want to have this in their backyard? And in, in the midst of, I, I think probably around this well pad area has to be one of the most concentrated areas of homes and children. And nobody seems to care about the children. I mean, it just, I can't see how anybody in any good conscience could vote for this to be in the midst of, as I say, I think the most concentrated area of, of people and children. I have more here, but, oh, okay, with that consolidated building back there, if there is a problem, an explosion, whatever, that building will be destroyed, no doubt. There goes our communication of evacuation, right? So that doesn't help us. And then, how's everybody going to get out anyway? And, and the high tech farms with all the old folks, how are they going to get out of there so quickly? And around Monteverde and all, for children? I just think it's common sense to have to say no.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we're going to cross the aisle, sorry. Ma'am, any comment for me? Okay, we'll cross the aisle, I think you're a party objector.
Yeah, I named that up.
Oh, that's right, yes, thank you for reminding me, come on down.
I've re-read the 275, that's 18, completely up. Diane Donnermeyer, T-O-N-N-E-R, M-E-P-Y, B-R, ISIS only. 324 Saddleup Road, 670 15044. I've been to all the meetings and read all the meeting minutes of various board meetings throughout the township. We already know that Olympus didn't fully disclose or perhaps their control has evolved since their meeting with the planning commission, just as it did in the rest of the township. For example, the number of wells, five became sixteen, perhaps four. Four non-idling trucks without backup alarms have become a convoy of six idling trucks with backup alarms. Only a well pad was proposed, not the other vital structures that are absolutely necessary for the process. For some strange reason, Olympus refuses to inboard and alerting 911 of an emergency. Is it because the residents will see, hear, smell, or feel the emergency? Please don't fall for this involvement nonsense. You know they only proposed what they thought they could get away with, but the residents caught them. Imagine what else we would have uncovered had we been allowed to dig into the entire application. I've heard from many people that this is already a done deal and that the board will vote yes because it will bring too much money into the township to turn away. But my hope is that after listening to all the party objector testimony, we'll reconsider. Dispatched by my parents who live within a two-mile radius of the site, needed a Western ambulance three times and the ambulances arrived immediately. Once this mess begins, how long will it take for that ambulance to arrive? What if it's a life or death emergency that time? I beg that each board member get in your car and drive along Oak Road, Middle Road Extension, Mathentire Road, Bond Haven 12, Ben Middle Road, across Cedar Ridge and back down Main Head. While doing so, take note of how many homes, housing developments you pass. Then ask yourself, why would anyone have bought their home, no, or I'm sorry, would anyone have bought their home knowing fracking could be within two miles? My final comments are, I'm not opposed to fracking. You can Google fracking images on the internet, you will see them in vast open landscapes, non-residential areas that have over 4,000 residents. I personally believe it is a joke that any oil and gas company in conjunction with any township supervisor would even think that this area could be safe for fracking.
Hey, one second, your, your time is up.
One more second?
One more second.
Then throw it in, it sits on top of the underground mine. There aren't enough insurance policies available to cover the homeowners' investments.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, who's next? We have Mr. Teesel through right now. And back to your side. Then with the gray sweater.
My name is Canell Turner, B O R D, I live at 176 Robbs Road, Cheswick, PA, 10, 15024. Thank you for this opportunity. First question I'd like to ask, I've been to a lot of meetings and I don't think I've ever seen any of these natural gas shirts here. And so we're involved in communicating with each other, where have you all been? That's not on the letter, that's no obligation. So, I'm a fine art restoration professional, have absolutely no experience in hydraulic engineering or other professions related to fracking, but I do have a few questions. The first question is about safety and evacuation. To population of 3,000 to 4,000 people, having to be evacuated in the case of an explosion or gas leak would be considered a national emergency. Who would be responsible for contacting the governor to deploy the national guard and could that happen in a reasonable timeframe? Secondly, transportation. There will be trucks and other vehicles, not only from other states, but also from other counties. Allegheny County residents are required to have two yearly inspections to be done on all of their vehicles. One is a safety inspection and another is an emissions inspection. It doesn't seem to be in the best interest of residents of Westier, Richland, Hampton, and beyond to have to comply with the law that literally exempts all other vehicles traveling in and out of Allegheny County that will be causing large amounts of emissions affecting our air quality. Would Olympus be willing to comply with the emissions inspections by installing catalytic converters on all of their vehicles, including the cars and SUVs driven by their employees? Thirdly, school taxes. Who will be driving these vehicles? Is Olympus going to move their executives, labor, and engineers into our school district along with their families? Will their children be attending our school? Will their children be attending our school, resulting in a need for more teachers, staff, and supplies that may possibly increase school taxes? And is Westier prepared to eliminate the higher taxes once Olympus employees move their, move into other counties and states? Thank you for your consideration of my questions, and it is my desire that you deny the application.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Kabor Horsey, H O R S Y T H E, addresses two sixty-one, High Tire Farm Drive, Missouri. My husband, Don, and I live in Westier since two thousand and six. We love our community and also the nature and our house. This is a retirement community with many older people. If Olympus' energy begins fracking here, we will have to live worrying about our health and safety. And also, the house, a part of our house, will go down soon. We hope the board of supervisors is going to accept Olympus' energy application because this is a big major reaction. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving down the road there, any additional commenters? No, C, nodding, she being nodding. Back on this side of the room now? I'm kind of, I am following the heads, actually. So, two gentlemen in the hats in that row, you're on your, yeah? Moving down to the gentleman in the hat on the end of the row? There we go.
I got a comment earlier, I was told that I'm not allowed to make a comment on that.
I'm sorry, what's your name, sir?
Party objector, John Vasquez, three eleven, Bridge Court, Allison Park. I'm a taxpayer of this township, and I think my word should be heard. I sometimes interject the people.
We made it very clear, sir, that during the party objector portion of the cases, all party objectors would have an opportunity to speak. In fact, this board allowed every party objector without any time restraints whatsoever to speak. We called multiple times at the last meeting to ensure that all party objectors present had an opportunity to provide their testimony.
Why are you moving the tone stage spinning that time?
In order for efficiency, for one reason, sir. Because we've been here now for, this is the ninth night, and not that it's not an important issue, and not that it's not worthy of all the testimony and evidence that we're hearing. However, those are the rules set at the beginning, so if we change the rules for one individual, you know, ninety-nine percent of the way through...
I'm not asking you to change the rule, I'm just saying, the number of people that moved in here defeats the time limit.
Sir, sir, I'm, sir, I'm going to catch you on that.
So move on.
We will move on. Thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen in the hats, okay, I see someone on the wall, are you coming on? Great, thank you.
My name is Rick Ann King. I'm in the fourth system, middle extension. I have great concerns about this entire project. I hope there are questions that have not been answered. I'm wondering why metal loading extension is the only site that's required. And having kind of those heavy trucks going down, the road will have to find straight down. Even with that, haul trucks going back and forth, it's my understanding that a lot of the times where industrial traffic and road, hard road traffic will be stopped. There's also now a hired department, which is located over there again, of metal loading extension, and wanted to mean that the project is quite a disaster. So I'm asking the supervisors to please consider the effects on all of the people in this area on, on November ten. And keep in mind that we are so, are too, I'm not sure that, that some have a lot to do. And asking that you please consider these and vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. I will see now it's tracked, so if you'll comment, come on up, and I see individuals in the stand with a hat on, come on up, sir.
My name is Bob Silverard, S O B T H A R D, three oh six, Bridge Court, Allison Park, P A. My only question is, are currently exposed to, why the people, more the people? And what I get out of being in all these meetings is the people are not for this project. And I wish you would consider.
Thank you, sir, for your comment. Are there any other individuals, residents, taxpayers, and township who are not party objectors who wish to provide comments to the board this time? So, yeah, maybe come on up, give me a line up against this wall, might be a little easier that way, we have an idea who, who's left there. That was smart, you jumped straight through, that was a crafty move.
This is a culmination for my neighbors who have been texting me, but they're not here, so I hope that I read this, it makes sense. In a time when governmental agencies are spending funds that they don't have and putting a burden on our future generations, we in Wester Township have the opportunity to generate funds that would improve our community, whether it be spent on infrastructure or under improvement of these haven't clearly been offered. We all here are homes and we don't care for well pad as well as somewhere else in nature. I believe in averaging repentance and completely support the guests and all development of Wester Township. I believe Olympus is not in the business to fail, they want to succeed without incident. The individual concerns of the neighborhood, however, the governing bodies between ladies companies have more expertise than questioning or concerned person. Don't let a rational or positive scenario drive you in. And so why was this process along the start ten years ago? It is a very tight set of rules. So, there's several residents who are not willing to be supported.
Next up?
I'm Lisa Rothra, R O T H R A U F S, thirteen eighty-eight Little Road, seventy-sixth and now, I'm good.
I'm Dan Rothoff, and like you said, we live on Little Road Extension. There was a lot of bridge right below the road right now, so when we talked about tough to get up, we've had to deal with that, and you're able to get to our road several different ways. And that's been over two months of social work on that bridge. And, you know, I don't think that I'm retired, and finally I see the chance of making some extra money. So, I don't see how or who has a problem with maybe getting some extra money. So, Lisa and I support this project, and feel it should be approved by the board.
Thank you, sir. Any comments?
Hello, my name is Mike Wonder, and I live at eighteen Palm Street, Russellville, Pennsylvania. And I'm here to say that I think the board supervisors should not allow fracking in Westier due to the negative impact of air pollution, water contamination, and the challenge of wastewater disposal, harmful humans, and your diamond. Furthermore, that there are impacts being associated with fracking, but this is meant to usually cover the damage caused to roads.
Right.
They dropped your body, crack, the company itself, and a million dollars, while it sounds like a lot, I think about...
Yeah, 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 you did. How'd you know it was me? Oh.
Thank you.
You, I think you were...
Max Reddick?
Yes, I couldn't recognize it.
I'm a fifty-two-year resident of Wester Township. My wife is a lifelong prison prisoner, but I don't think I should take her long notice. We're here to support Olympus and the people in this application. The financial reports are certainly very much in their favor. We own a fair amount of property, and our taxes are considerable. And this is a considerable amount of taxes. Really quiet, been on the fix ten years, a lot of years. Very beneficial to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Ben, Tri-First, K-12, D R, thirty thirteen, K-12, somebody that I follow, for, for. First of all, I'm a hundred percent believer in this country's economy, capitalism. And, you know, this company is full of money, and after this, we'll miss, we'll offend this community. I personally don't feel that there should be any, anything that has to get approved or whatever. They're all positive, they're able to do what they want. I think that this is basically just, you know, government's over-spending and even having an opinion on whether the wells are going or not. This is capital. Orders are done, laws, they're all getting ridiculous. Violent fathers, this country, Father John Jefferson wants to, you know, the laws become unjust, it's our duty to resist. I voted this support, didn't have any feeling at all, and the wells should just fell in. I voted for a code, nuisance facility, Marcy's Winery. I didn't, I just deal with it. What can I do? Business, they're running their business. Bans, children shrinking, people coming on my property all buzzed off, barking, I mean, the problem is, besides the fact that someone could get killed crossing the road every single weekend. There's no pedestrian walk there. They don't do anything about that.
At the risk of overreach, sir, could you stick to this particular application?
I would have said, it's capitalism, it's progress, it's business. If you don't like it, too bad, I feel you should vote for it again and again and again, every day, anyway, anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, Vernon Rollins, fifteen B and R, give some UPA. I'm for, and I don't think you guys should take away people's property rights.
Thank you, sir.
Gotcha, Stanny, T R I S T A N I, sixty-four Bryson Road, give some UPA. I believe you should approve the...
Thank you, sir. Possibly our last public commenter?
Good evening, my name is Thomas Lizalise, L I S O W S K I, eleven twenty-three Bryson, B R Y S O N, give some UPA, one five oh four four.
I do believe this is good for the township and the residents and the landowners, and I don't affect to this well site coming in, in future well sites. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Looks like we do have at least one more comment, come on up, man.
My name is Denise Scandrell, hundred and three two six, Saddle Brook Road, six seven nine, S C A N D R, oh no. Okay, briefly, I've sat through the majority of these meetings. I've sat through the majority of these meetings, and while I'm not here to oppose the idea of fracking or questioning capitalism and what the definition of that really is, I am here to object to the location that has been selected. A couple reasons, one, the application was suspended before a lot of the developments in housing developments were completed, and there are some that are even still proposed and are even happening around this well site. The other thing that I gleaned from a prior meeting was there's proposed legislation, although it's not passed, to change a setback from six hundred and fifty feet to twenty-five hundred feet, if I remembered that correctly. I questioned why, there must be some lessons learned from the government to make that modification, but yet that's a lot of issue because we would just be grandfathered, regardless of if there is evidence that there is some healthy reasons to change that setback. And lastly, I guess for those that are financially benefiting from this proposal, for me, I would consider the fact of there's a young family that has built their forever home and is going to have a well site in their backyard and has a small family, that to me really got me, but I just hope that you consider all of the factors, and I oppose the well site in this particular, impatient, and maybe find another place in Westier that's less populated, similar to the general scope on the cap of the company where we had his well site.
Thank you. Next.
I definitely found it, I'm going to call complete trial, it's on, I resonate with the president to this, in my, 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 my,
I'd just like to address, uh, some of the legal issues that have been raised, particularly during the event. Case, uh, for that new evidence, this is our position on those issues. Your ordinance has thirteen single-spaced pages of requirements that apply to oil and gas development, which is far more than you see for any other type of use in the township. Uh, there are also additional generally applicable requirements that apply to all uses in all districts that apply. And authorizing a deep well site on this property, it's, uh, the legislative decision was made that is presumed that along with the specific requirements of the ordinance, so that, that this is an appropriate use in the zoning district. So, the fact that population densities are being pointed out, it was already a decision made that, uh, of deep well sites allowed these types of issues. So, Olympus' burden admittedly is to meet specific requirements. The ordinance, after that, any objectors have to present on general health and safety issues, uh, specific testimony as to why there's something abnormal about this well site compared with any other oil and gas well site. And I think your solicitor, uh, when these issues have come up, has consistently ruled that those kinds of general issues that are general attacks on oil and gas, uh, are not relevant to your consideration. I'm not going to go down through all of them, but the four or five, uh, specific ordinance requirements that I do want to address. And the most, uh, most, uh, focused upon is the setback issue. Uh, your ordinance requires a six-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback from a deep well site from an existing building. We've heard a lot about that so far. I'd like to make a couple of points in that regard. Number one, our position is that Olympus meets that requirement. And the reason Olympus meets that requirement is that the pad's designed and will be fenced off in a way with no drilling, no high-grade fraction, or any permanent production equipment relocated within six-hundred-and-fifty feet of any existing building. Uh, although it wasn't necessary, uh, based on our position on setbacks, Olympus did submit waivers from the two owners of nearby non-residential operations, or point out, uh, that they signed waivers. Secondly, uh, Olympus, uh, is willing to slightly reduce that pad size to take into account the fact that, depending on how you interpret the ordinance, the six-hundred-and-fifty-foot requirement from those industrial-related facilities clips the bottom corners, the southwest corner and the southeast corner of the pad. As I indicated on the first night, uh, appearance, the, if the board interprets your ordinance as what qualifies as a deep well site, as including the portions of the pad where none of those facilities are being located, Olympus will modify its plan and cut off those two corners completely. Now, there was some, as a reference to testimony from Mr. Johnson, uh, he was asked a lot of questions about why the pad size, several hundred feet by several hundred feet, uh, it is what it is, uh, and explained the, the reasons for the location of the facilities, the safe, uh, circulation of traffic and the like. But to just to make it clear, while the transcript admittedly is a little murky on this, I'm authorized here tonight on behalf of Olympus to permit that if the board is of the opinion that no part of the pad can be within six-hundred-and-fifty feet, Olympus will modify its plan, uh, to, to do that. And again, it's, it's always a testimony and a drawing has always shown that those areas are going to be fenced off anyway. Okay, one of the big issues here is that places setbacks is what qualifies as the quote-unquote destruction. Okay? You've heard during these hearings that the objectors have taken what we view to be an extreme view, that the six-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback applies not only to the pad, but also to, among other things, the access road and signage for the access road and the subsurface gas pipes leaving the pad and the water pipes coming onto the pad, stormwater facilities, and even the grading that's related to development of the site. Their view, that is quote-unquote destruction. This is not a reasonable interpretation of your ordinance that would basically conclude placing any well pad anywhere in the township. You just work out those numbers, uh, six-hundred-and-fifty feet one direction, six-hundred-and-fifty feet the other direction means you have to have a thirteen-hundred-foot swath to even put a, a road in, an access drive for a touchdown. You can't put a sign there and the like. The position of stormwater facilities count for setback purposes is completely inconsistent with how the township is interpreted, its own ordinance in commercial and residential context. In fact, if you may recall, when one of the witness, uh, objectors testified, based on their logic about what qualifies as destruction, uh, under the zoning ordinance, every objector's house, everybody's house in, in this community would be in violation of the setback requirements because you have, uh, earth disturbance to build the house within the setbacks, you have driveways to access your house, you have water lines to service your house, sewer lines to service your house, and quite frankly, somewhat ironically, gas lines provide the gas to heat the house and the town. So, our position is that, uh, you have to have a reasonable interpretation of what structure is under the ordinance. I think in other contexts, uh, dealing with commercial or residential development, you've done that and same should be implied here. The last issue on setbacks, uh, relates to the consolidates, communications, what the one witness who testified about this called an equipment hut, okay? To qualify as a building, as you've heard, your ordinance says the structure has to be usable either A for habitation or B as a working environment. The crowd witness even referred to this as an equipment hut. Although they've never been in it, they have no firsthand knowledge of what goes on in that hut or how frequently it's visited. Uh, the witness acknowledged, you can see from the photos, it has no windows. Uh, the witness, uh, didn't know whether there were any bathrooms or any water or sewer. It's quite evident based on documents I gave you tonight that there is no public water, there is no public sewer, and therefore there are no bathrooms. Under your own Uniform Construction Code, uh, which incorporates plumbing code, all occupancies have to have restroom facilities. So, it fails in that regard. Again, the Oakmont Authority confirmed there's no water service. The Deer Creek Drainage Basin Authority confirmed there's no sewer service. And, uh, the township has no records of anyone ever seeking permission to even construct this, this facility. So, main point is, and we'll address this, I think, your solicitor indicated there will be proposed findings and conclusions that everybody will be able to submit, both us and the objectors. A couple of the other issues that were raised, um, uh, quite frankly, most of them were Mr. Resinetti. Uh, rather than go over those tonight, uh, we think those are technical issues that can just be addressed in the written submissions. Shifting gears, there's one other major topic though that we want to address. And that deals with this documentation, supposed data from DEP about alleged violations from, uh, from, uh, of, 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 by Olympus of various regulatory statutes. There are a couple of critical points that have to be made here. And you can crunch numbers any way you want, you can summarize numbers and data, but the presentation that was given by the objectors here significantly misconstrues the meaning of those violation notices and data. It really reflects a misunderstanding of DEP's inspection and enforcement processes, okay? I'd like to walk through those a little bit right now because I think it's really critical to understand that these numbers sound a little terrible, but when you slice and dice them, uh, there's not very much there. First, notices of violation, there, there are two types of, uh, enforcement matters. There are notices of violations and there are actual enforcement matters. Notice of violations are not a finding of liability. They're essentially an administrative allegation by persons of various degrees of training and experience. Critically, under DEP's guidance, they're expressly quote informational, unwavering, and are non-applicable. So, they don't resolve anything, okay? Uh, the DEP guidance goes on to state that the language in the NOV must not direct, require, or command an action to be taken, but rather should be requested, recommend that a person receiving the notice pursue corrective measures in a timely fashion. In addition, when a, a, a violation notice is received, operators are required to respond to the violation notice. And in doing so, they may very well contest whether there is any violation at all. Uh, after which, what typically happens, DEP does nothing. They just sit on that. Uh, a mere tally of numbers of violations, therefore, doesn't take into account whether the, how often, whether an operator responded. And DEP does not remove NOVs once they're posted. So, this thrown up there, operator can dispute them, but they're part of the record. Olympus responds, as it's required to do, to each NOV immediately, assesses site conditions, and takes steps to address DEP concerns. So, that, those are NOVs, and I'll talk a little bit about the numbers on those here in a moment. They're contrasted with what are more formal DEP, what are called corrective actions. Corrective actions include, uh, they compel certain actions and they conclude what are called consent orders, uh, consent orders and agreements, uh, administrative orders, suspension or revocation of permits and registrations, and actually actions in court. So, in terms of actual operator compliance, corrective actions are the more relevant here. Not this total tally of all these alleged notices of violation. Uh, Olympus has been subject to a total of four of these, all of which were voluntary consent orders. And I stressed they were voluntary. Uh, these, these orders establish a schedule and timeframe in which, uh, actions will be taken, recognizing that a permit modification and other DEP approvals may be required before the action can even be taken. So, we have two types here. We've got the notice of violation and you have the actual corrective actions, again, which are only four, not hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. There's a multiplier effect with the way DEP handles these notices of violation. DEP will always issue multiple violations within an NOV for the same incident based on separate statutory and regulatory provisions. You could comparatively, you typically will receive anywhere from four to eight alleged violation notices for one action on one day. Uh, it's like, you know, if you were someone that, uh, Mr. Walker was talking about that was going a little too fast, the speeding, uh, it would be like getting multiple speeding tickets for one act, okay? In addition, uh, following the incident, DEP will reissue those same NOVs. Well, let me talk about, if you recall, the NOV I showed you about included the deer tracks among other things, that NOV cited four statutory sections for one, one set of activity. But it's, it's worse than that. Those are all issued on one day. DEP will repeatedly come back in and reissue those same notices over a period of time, uh, even though there was only one triggering event, uh, and so those numbers will just tally up and tally up. This multiplier effect is actually evidenced by one of the exhibits compared and introduced by Mr. Crowley. Uh, his exhibit number six, and I suggest you go back and take a look at this amongst all the paper at some point along the way here, uh, references the Apollo B Dominion Pipeline NOV. On six separate dates over a five-week period, DEP issued four violations each, uh, citing the same four statutory and regulatory provisions. Thus, although there were, there was only one triggering event, a total of twenty-four violation notices were, were given for that one thing. You know, in certain instances, the innovative issues of those NOVs on multiple dates occurred because DEP, Olympus was actually waiting for DEP to approve a modified plan to rectify those particular issues. Finally, as I previously noted, a mere tally of the, the number of violations doesn't take into account an operator's response contesting those notices. There's no evidence that Mr. Crowley's statistical analysis took into account notices to which Olympus responded contesting the notice and the allegation. Couple other key points to keep in mind here, and I think there was some graphics to this. Over ninety percent of the NOVs that were issued to Olympus involve erosion and sedimentation control and administrative issues. And if you go back and you actually dug, dug into the data, you can find that these were relatively minor in nature. Witness what we showed you a little earlier this evening, involving literally getting cited because there was a deer path. You also have to take into account, a lot of these occurred during rather extreme rain events, including up to a thousand-year flood. Just one example of this, which all folks will probably remember this anecdotally. In February of twenty-eighteen, National Weather Service data shows that, uh, the area received over seven inches of rain, way above normal. Between February twenty-one and March seven of that year, DEP issued thirty-six violation notices, uh, related to the, the driveway slip at the Zeus Pad. The Zeus Pad being one of the ones that, uh, that Mr. Walker testified to. And basically said he, he wasn't aware of any DEP violations. Doesn't mean it didn't exist, but it just shows how, how innocuous they were in the scheme of things. The total number of violations for the Zeus Pad was forty-seven. Slip occurred entirely within the surface owner's property, but it, it, it approached about twenty feet beyond what the original, uh, uh, limit of disturbance was. No waters of Commonwealth were, were impacted or threatened by the slip. And there were no safety issues associated with that slip. And the remediation of the slip required DEP, like some of these other cases, required DEP to approve, uh, that remedial plan. You may recall, that was during the same time period, uh, if you lived, most of us lived in the area a long time, that on US Route thirty in, uh, West Moreland County, not more than eight, ten miles from, uh, the Zeus site, Route thirty collapsed. And if you recall, it was, it was shut down for a long period of time. Some of these same ENS violations occur across the board. Well, these same kind of ENS issues, erosion, sedimentation control issues, occur with every construction industry out there. Whether you're building a housing plant, whether you're building a commercial endeavor of whatever sort. The key difference here is, uh, companies like Olympus are intensely regulated by the Department of Environmental Protection, whereas all the, most of these other developments are not regulated by DEP, but instead by separate agencies, most notably, uh, county, um, conservation agents. So, it, operators such as Olympus are subject to a level of regulation well beyond what, uh, uh, most of these other industries are. In fact, looking some of the pictures from the example I gave you, uh, in terms of supposed non-rescuration, uh, I, if, if those same rules were applied to our front yard, we'd be getting citations, uh, given my inability to have grass for it. So, the, the intensity of the regulation of DEP is just beyond pale compared with other, other uses out there. Critical points, DEP has never thought any of this is serious enough to, uh, issue a cease and desist order to Olympus, nor has, uh, DEP ever thought these issues were serious enough that they would require denial of a permit. Last piece, a couple other minor issues, minor important issues related to, uh, the DEP issue. This comparison with other operators fails to take into account any number of things. Inspection levels and enforcement levels of DEP vary from year to year. Olympus's activity just been the last couple of years. It varies between regional offices and it varies even within regional offices depending on the inspector that's issuing the notice of violation. Two last issues, uh, just briefly. Um, there was discussion of the time period to allegedly quote resolve a violation. Uh, Mr. Crowley's data with, with part of the time period between when Olympus first received an NOV and when DEP notes the violation is resolved is not an accurate reflection of when Olympus commenced action to address the matter or to, uh, uh, resolve it completely. That administrative determination of resolve, the operator cannot impact that. DEP, if it wants to consider, consider that, sit on that for a long period of time, um, and it's basically an administrative item. So, to say the time period from when an NOV was first issued to when it was finally noted and administrated resolve does not necessarily reflect and usually does not reflect when substantively that matter is taken care of. The last issue, uh, there was a reference in some of the documents to, um, NOVs for industrial, quote, industrial. for quote industrial discharge into the waters of the Commonwealth. Virtually every one of those refers to not chemicals on the well site or the like, but the sediment. That's it. DEP's classification of a runoff of sediment is an industrial discharge of water in the Commonwealth. So, we really wanted to avoid bringing in people to rebut on a case-by-case basis each of these items because at the end of the day, what's before you is Olympus' application here. So with that, I will close my comments and ask the board to approve the applications.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lucas. We are now, at the time of closing the hearings, lost the board for a motion here momentarily. Prior to that, I do want to just kind of run through where things go from here. I'm sure that there's some folks who have questions. So, as we will be closing the hearing tonight, the board has 45 days, according to state law, the Minnesota's Planning Code, to issue a written decision. Because this application per condition we use is opposed, the board will be required to make detailed findings of fact and conclusions of law, and vote on those at a public meeting. So that 45 days takes us very close to the end of the year. My understanding is the board certainly intends to have this decision made, you know, prior to that, prior to the end of the year. Whether that will be at the next regular meeting on December 15th, or whether or not the board will be required to hold a special meeting later in the year, has yet to be determined. So, that's an open issue on the timing of that decision. As folks will recall, there is also a pending land development application that was filed by Olympus. It has been kicking around for lack of a better term, the planning commission for quite a while now. And there's currently an extension given by the applicant because there are time periods within which the board of supervisors needs to act on applications like that. And that extension currently goes to the end of December as well, so December 31st of 2021. There has not been a determination made by the board as to whether to request additional time to consider that land development application, or whether that may be acted upon prior to the end of the year as well. In connection with the findings of fact and conclusions of law, it's something that we've mentioned several times throughout these proceedings. And so, what the board is inviting, all party objectors as well as the applicant, is for a set of proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law. So, you know, what you heard from Mr. Lucas tonight was essentially a summation, a closing argument, whatever you want to call it, of his application, what he believes the facts of record show, and whether or not those establish compliance with the township's ordinances. So, you folks are, again, party objectors, as well as the applicant are all invited to submit in writing to the township manager your own proposed set of findings and conclusions of law in which you would refer to testimony from the transcripts, evidence of record, whether it be studies, drawings, plans, et cetera, that you believe supports your position in the case. And this really is an important opportunity, I think, for folks to take if you're so inclined. Obviously, there's no requirement that you take this step. However, the board will be reviewing and considering this application in executive session, which it's permitted to do under state law, under the Sunshine Act for quasi-judicial deliberations. Which means essentially that the board can meet privately to discuss the same things that you folks will be looking at. The testimony that was provided, the exhibits that were submitted, and essentially the entire record as a whole. So, what we want to do next is to establish a timeline by which you will need to submit those proposed findings. So before I suggest that they, let me ask the court reporter, any idea when you may have these transcripts completed for these nine hearings? I don't want to put you on the spot, I apologize, but roughly. Wow, so you stayed on top of this. Okay, great. So, if we said within two weeks. Okay. So, let's assume worst-case scenario that we have the transcripts within two weeks. You know, we really want the board to have a full opportunity to review your proposed findings. So, my suggestion as I sit here now would be, you know, I know we have a holiday in there as well. So, I was initially thinking the end of the month, but let me look to the board. Perhaps the end of the first week of December would be, is that a reasonable time period? Mr. Lucas, does that work for you?
Are you talking about December 3rd, December 10th?
It would be the week starting December 3rd and December 15th. Okay, I'm saying whatever that Monday is, the first full weekend, the first full week of December.
So then it would be...
Does that take a sixth of the 10th? Sorry, I wish, this shit out of camera.
We'll take it to the 10th, we'll take it to the 10th.
You know, that's cutting it a little close, maybe December 3rd. Yeah, let's make it December 3rd. Apologies, that puts you in a bit of a crunch, but we really want the board to have time to digest. And I don't want you to go through the exercise of going, putting these together, and then the board not have time to actually review them and consider them. So, we'll make the deadline for submission of proposed findings, December 3rd, by close of business. We will make the court reporters' contact information available because if you do want to order a transcript, you will need to do that through the court reporter. Mr. Payne, can I ask you to make sure that is being available to the public?
Yeah, I have our number, thank you for that.
Okay, we can try to read it somewhere. I know the website's having some issues right now, but we're working through them, right?
There's a couple bumps on the website.
Okay. Well, speaking of the website, because there is obviously important information on the website that folks will need to access. First, I know the township is committed, I know there were, again, the website was down completely, I believe, a bit over the weekend. We are working to make sure that all exhibits will be posted on the township website so that you can reference them. In addition to those exhibits, we also will be posting any written public comment that was received. We did get, you know, maybe 15 or so emails to the township manager providing public comment beyond what was provided verbally here tonight. So, we will include those as part of the, as part of the record and placed on the website. Mr. Lucas, any other housekeeping from here?
Just on behalf of Olympus, I would like to extend appreciation to everybody, particularly the supervisor for patience through this process.
Thank you for that. And let me personally say, I know this has been a really trying time. It's been a very stressful situation. You know, you folks have been really great to work with. I know there's been some tempers that flared, you know, over that course of time. But I can tell you, having, you know, quite a few of these hearings in my career, I've just been really impressed just by the general civility and respect that you folks have shown towards each other despite, you know, what your position may be on this particular matter. So, personally, I beg you for that. I know the board appreciates it as well. This is, I've only been the solicitor in West Deer for a couple of years, and so I really haven't had an opportunity to get to know a large group of folks like this, so, prior to this. Thank you for that. I know on behalf of the board, we thank everybody who participated, and, you know, from staff to the board members. To the manager.
Yeah.
Proposed findings to the township manager. So yeah, thanks, everybody, again. With that said, Mr. President, or Mr. Chairman, you want to ask for a motion to close the hearing? We're sort of making up this point in information, but it's worked for us so far.
So is this, are these, are these findings of fact, conclusions of law, are they in writing or is it emailed to us?
No.
Oh, okay, so it's submitted in writing?
No, I mean, you submit it via, you submit your writing via, you know.
Okay. What about written public comment that you have against their deadline?
That deadline was tonight.
Was tonight, okay. How will we receive notice of the public meeting?
It will be advertised in accordance with the Sunshine Act.
Okay, will it be on the website?
I believe that the township makes every attempt to post all meeting information on their website.
Okay. I do not hope I have to do this, but I'd like to move that all exhibits, crowd, party comments, and any one who makes other comments, be entered into evidence.
We have accepted all exhibits and evidence except those, except to the extent that there were objections that were sustained. We did not require that additional formality, but thank you for double checking.
Okay, fair enough. And I want to thank all of these people, especially Mr. Payne, who probably didn't raise. And I doubt all of you for base location of all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Alba. Thank you, everybody, again. Do I hear a motion to...
Oh, I will hear two.
All right, I have a motion, a motion by Mr. Jordan to adjourn at 18:00 PM. Sent to you by Ms. Halban, now to a vote. Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Halban?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and Mr. Bass. Thank you again, everybody.